Start with the reports. And I know the mayor always likes to start with the student reports, so why don't we start with them?
Okay, so to start off, this Saturday, call is coming up for the FHS students. So it's, everyone's really excited on April 30th, and we're all getting ready.
Also, um, we just found out that Washington Post nominated, um, chose Fitchburg High School as one of the most challenging high schools in the United States. Um, we ranked, we ranked 1,755 out of 22,000 high schools.
Whoa.
And, some, 1,755 out of 22,000. And also, we were nom, we were placed in the top 100 schools of, in Massachusetts, completely.
Wow. Very nice. Yes.
Yeah.
On April 5th, four of the teachers of Fitchburg High School were awarded for their achievements. It included Mrs. Alexander, a literature teacher, Mrs. Bullock, a biology teacher, Mrs. Hironz, and Mrs. Romero, which is also another biology teacher. So it was a big accomplishment, and everyone from the school celebrated and was very excited for them. They went all the way to Boston and were greeted by, I believe, senators and were spoken to about it.
Excellent. Very nice.
Also, the multicultural Club Fitchburg High School will be hosting a karaoke night, which is really cool. There's gonna be food and music from different cultures, which is a great way to bring our school together and, yeah, reflect.
And when will that be?
That would be this Thursday, I believe, at 6:00.
Okay, great.
And then, there wasn't really much going on these past few days because it was April vacation. So people were with their families, having fun. But, one problem that we're facing again is air attendance. We have been, I have been checking the board, and the percent just keeps going down slowly, but we're hoping that it'll come back up.
The good news is that we started today, Monday, after vacation, with attendance above 90%, which is a good start.
Good.
Also, SATs and MCAS and the AP tests are coming up. The AP test began on Monday, and all our, all the students are working really hard to prepare for them.
And that's all we have for you for today.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
The next on the agenda is the school committee chair report, but since the chair is not here, I think we're gonna just go on to the resource committee.
Nothing to report at this time.
Okay. Policy committee?
Um, we are looking to schedule a meeting, probably in mid-May. We also have two, sorry, we have two policies in our package tonight for the final approval. They have already gone through the first and second, this will be the second reading. So at that point, they get put in the giant binder.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Student support committee?
Yeah, we met tonight, and on the agenda were, actually NAS, it was follow-up from some of the things that you were mentioning about the Honors Academy. And we just wanted to have a general sense of kind of the direction at this point, and kind of checking in about how that's all going. So Mr. Roach was here and gave us a great in-depth accounting of really kind of where the Honors Academy is at at this point. For those people at home, the junior class is the first class to come through. So next year, they'll be the first class to graduate as the Honors Academy. And we talked about really kind of making sure that we stay in touch with all the kids that have gone through the Honors Academy as they leave, and just really continually look to, you know, to make that program even greater. I mean, it's, really is a great program. And it was, we were really appreciative that you were able to kind of give us some insight about the program, and we were able to follow up more with Mr. Roach. So, it sounds like there's a lot of emphasis on continuous improvement there, and, and exciting, really, for this next group of kids that just got letters that they're accepted. So, so that's great. And then the other item on our agenda was follow-up on the student, sorry, on the parent survey about after-school needs. It's, it's an important goal for us on that subcommittee and for the superintendent that we kind of address those parent needs of what to do for after-school care. And we, Superintendent Rabanel sent out an additional survey on top of the last one that got more information about what parents might be willing to either pay or provide transportation for. And so we're excited. We're looking at a company right now that provides options, and very interesting options. So, there'll be more information really kind of coming about that. We're, we're really in the process of working on that. So if any parents have input or information beyond taking the survey, if you want to contact any of us, we'd be welcome, we'd love to hear that input. And just on your student report, I did want to say, the Saturday, the Saturday was 5K, Sunday was 5K for Little Feet, and it was a fun event. I was a walker, not a runner, and other members here.
Yeah.
I think you came in second, Mr. Rabanel, as a, as a walker, right?
As a walker. I pulled a Rosie Ruiz and I started running for the last 30 minutes.
But nobody knew who Rosie Ruiz was.
I did.
I'm very sad.
And, and my dog came in as the first dog. The first dog. But what a great event put on by Fitchburg High Kids. And I loved that the middle school program even sent a group as the water station. So Mrs. Torigney had a group of little kids out there giving water to the middle school kids. So, so that's it, the student support.
Excellent. Um, school personnel committee?
We're going to have an executive session tonight to discuss the clerical contract.
Okay. And we'll do that, we'll break for that later on. And staff student presentations, are we gonna do that right now?
Okay, yep. If you're all done with your presentations. So, this is the, this is a fantastic program. It's a partnership between Fitchburg State University and McKay Arts Academy. And we have some McKay Arts Academy students here. Today I have some of the names. If I let anybody out, when you come up, please make sure everyone gets introduced. But for the people at home, it's Grace Barry, Riker Dion, and Shayla Gonzalez Hernandez. And from the Alpha Program, Vince Spatafora, Barbara McQuirk, and Jane Crocker. So if those folks would come up to the front table, the presentation can begin. And if I forgot someone's name, please let everyone at, at home know who's participating. And the principal of McKay Arts Academy, Lourdes Ramirez, is here. And I'm not sure who is here from Fitchburg State. Oh, Lisa Moisen. Turn some chairs around or do?
So today, I will give you an overview of Bridges Together, an intergenerational program that we have been collaborating with at McKay. And then, I will, you will hear from our students about some of their takeaways from the program. And you will also hear from our Alpha members. They are the adult learners of the Fitchburg area. And that is a program through Fitchburg State University. And lastly, you will hear from Lisa Moisen, who will highlight some of the collaborations that we are working on between McKay and Fitchburg State University. I would also want to acknowledge that although you will hear from three of our Alpha members, we have other members who have joined us tonight. McKay teachers will also share with you about some of the benefits that they have been seeing around community building thanks to our participation with Bridges Together. So I'm going to give you a job, okay? When I go like this, I want you to just press on that arrow, okay? Let's try. Okay, and then you stop. So, last year, Lisa Moisen approached me, and she said, "I have learned about this program out of Sudbury called Bridges Together, and I think it would be really beneficial for students at McKay." So, our next conversation went from, "It sounds very interesting." She shared information with me, I looked into it. And then, the next call was, "I have an anonymous donor who will fully fund the program." It's a win-win situation for all of us. So, before the program, the third grade teachers, Lisa, some Alpha volunteers, and myself trained with the Bridges Together director. And she gave us an overview of the lessons, which is six lessons that I will quickly highlight for you tonight. And then, we talked about the importance for our students to learn about older adults and the benefits of establishing relationship with, relationships with them. So this is a pre-assessment. So, students were asked to share their thinking about old people or older adults. And these are some of the things that students said. They thought that old people were wrinkly and tired and grumpy, some of them said. And they often would use some kind of a, except, Mr. Stevens. So, they talked about older adults needing some kind of assistance to, to ambulate, and that they are, a lot of times, people that are not really a lot of fun to be around. So, before our volunteers came, students would have a homework that would prepare them for the lesson that they would be engaging with the older adults and the teachers. So, a lot of times, this homework involves interviewing people in their circle of, of love, or people that they are close to in their personal lives. And then they come into school and bring that information as part of their activities with our Alpha members. So the first activity was to, for students to get to know one another, and they come up with a name for their small group. So each Alpha member is paired with a small group of students. So, we then come to, they come to our school. We started out last October with one third grade class, and then we ended that, that cycle and began another one in December with two other groups that they came to our other two third grade classes. So, this activity involved students learning from, from one another. Okay? And, and you can go again. So you see, there's a lot of activities in, in a group. And they're very attached to common core around literacy and speaking and writing. Then the first lesson, it's about schools then and now. So, students would then learn about what school was like when our adult learners were attending school themselves. And you can see here some precious photographs in black and white from someone's own experience. And then our students gave our Alpha members a tour of the school to represent some of the changes that have taken place. And you will hear some of the students learning about what school was like, what they call it, back in the day. Then, this lesson here talks about students learning about their own ethnicity. So students interviewed their families, and they learned about their own family history, heirlooms that have gone from one generation to another in their own families that are treasured by them, and then some of the traditions. And then they brought that information and learned about that same information from our Alpha members. And they brought atlases and maps and showed students how some of their families had migrated from, from one location to another. And, and then they brought in some heirlooms that they have themselves. I have to say, and that this program has become very dear to my heart because I see what, the impact that it has brought to our students. And one of the most valuable moments for me has been looking at one of our third grade students come in with her mom's album from when she was pregnant, with all the, the ultrasounds to where when our student was born. And, I mean, what a valuable thing for her to have the opportunity to share with other students. I mean, when do we find an opportunity like this? Then you can see here, some of our Alpha members sharing their own heirlooms. And this is a continuation of other items that they brought to share. And I remember one of the teachers says to me, "I have all these very expensive things in my room." And, and students respected because they understood the value, not monetarily necessarily, but the emotional value of these items. They were very respectful and careful with it. And then here, Mr. Vin couldn't come and visit us to date, but he's another Alpha volunteer and that has some great stories to share as well. So for this lesson, students prepare a five-minute presentation or a lesson about something that they know a lot about, or something, a skill that they wanted to teach the members of their group. So on the left, Mr. Vin brought in his pistelli maker. And he brought Play-Doh to show students. I can't tell you how many times he kept saying, "You're not going to eat that, right?" He was concerned about how delicious they look. But he talked about his Italian background and, and the meaning of making pistellas with, as a family. And then we have here how to wrap a present.
That was actually done by one of the children.
That Todd, his group, how to do that, her group, how to do that. And then here, again, something that somebody knew a lot about. Okay, and then here, showing off the pistelli. Yeah, oh, the keys, that's right. Mr. Vin used to make keys. So he, was that Mr. Vin, right? Yes. So, so he shows students, you know, how keys are made and the machine and so forth. So then, after the program, we went back to do a post-assessment to really learn about what are, what are the benefits of this program and how have students' perception of elders had, had changed or had been impacted by the program. And you can see here, this is probably one of my most favorite images, where they clearly say, you know, they're kind, an old person is a kind and loving and nice person. It's caring, patient, and, and nice, helpful, loving, respectful. So this is part of a lesson where students learned, the title of the lesson was, "How Old Is Old." So they talked about, you know, age is really relative. So they learned about ageism, prejudice, stereotypes. And one of the things that they said, "Well, old people always get their nails done." So, so this clearly shows some of the benefits. Then, we have a final celebration, which is another great highlight, where our students and our Alpha members get together in a conference room at Fitchburg State University. And I loved that Lisa said to students, you can see the green bags from Fitchburg State on the tables. And she explained to students, "Whenever we get special guests, we always give them a present." So they're, "The bags are for us?" the students asked. And yes, they were so excited to be getting a Fitchburg State University bag and a pen. And, and they, it shows, you know, that we value them as, as visitors as well. And at this time, we talked, we talked about that we all are unique. We are, we are all special, and we are, we all bring something special to the world. And it was an opportunity for students to, to see their Alpha members again. But to also thank them for the experience, and they exchanged some special presents. So you can see here, again, a culminating activity. And this is a quilt that one of the classes, Mrs. Chapman's class, made. And, made by the students, and one of our grandparents assisted assembling them. And I remember that Mrs. Tetra's class gave the Alpha members this beautiful album with the postcards that our students made for, for our Alpha members. And Mr. Lewandowski's class also made a mat for, for students, I'm sorry, for, for the Alpha members. And it was really special to have that, that opportunity to put closure to it. And I have to say, it's temporary closure because our Alpha members have become part of McKay. And they are celebrities. They walk in, and it's a commotion. Students run to, to say hello and to hug them. And a lot of times, they have come back to McKay beyond the time of, of the program to participate in family activities. Most recently, we had a writing celebration, and our Alpha members came back to visit with us. So these are what we're calling the fast facts, and you can just take a moment and look through them. This has been a tremendous opportunity for us, and, and I hope that it will continue for years to come.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So at this time, we'll hear from our students. You want to move forward, so that's the microphone, so you have to speak into the microphone so they can hear you back at home, because we're on TV.
And why don't you tell us what your name is, okay?
My name is Grace.
Okay, Grace.
My name is Grace.
Hi.
When I first began, I thought of older people as people who had body problems and were wriggly. Now I know that they're loving, caring about everybody. And they look like they have blonde hair, black hair, or brown hair. And some have glasses and only have body problems that need games. I liked Bridges Together a lot. My favorite lesson was when Mrs. Barbara taught us about diamond poems.
That's great, thank you.
Nice. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Riker Dion. Although I have not participated in Bridges Together for long, I have grown very close to my Bridges partner, Mr. Vin. My group and I have also discovered a new respect for one another and learned more about each other. I have enjoyed working with my Bridges group, Shawn Deltergo, Lisa Carrillo, and Joshua Bibic. The lessons included many interesting activities. For instance, we were all required to teach our group a five-step tutorial. I could select anything that I wanted and chose a magic trick to make a coin disappear. Mr. Vin taught us about making pistellas and even let us experiment with clay. Bridges Together is a good program, and I love it. If I could participate in Bridges again, I would. I think Mr. Vin enjoyed Bridges and sharing his personality with us. Our class decided as a culminating project that we would make quotes for our older partners. We studied heirlooms and learned about a quote as a keepsake. We selected pictures of things important to our partners and painted them on fabric. Everyone in the group painted a remembrance picture. Then my Grammy, an adult, I spoke to often when doing Bridges at Home Connections volunteered to show them. Brooke's Grammy also helped with this important job. We hope that our Bridges partners will always remember us.
Because you can slide the microphone over. Just to make sure that you hear every word you have to say.
My name is Shayla, and what I learned in six weeks was differences between our generation and the eldest generation. The difference was that schools were separated by gender. And now we both go to the same schools. Another difference was they couldn't choose school they wanted, they wanted, and they had to go to the closest school. But now we can choose the school that we want, and, and we can go in a bus. The third difference is that at lunch, they had to walk to a certain house, and the mother there would have to feed the girls or the boys. And now students can stay at school and eat there. This is what I learned from our Bridges Together volunteers.
That's great.
Very good. While, while they're changing locations, I don't know if, has anyone seen the video where they're on the street and they ask kind of young people, millennials, describe an old person or act like an old person? And, and they, they hunch over, they walk slowly, they make faces and everything else. And then they actually bring in older people to meet them who show them that they can do yoga, they can do somersaults, they can dance, they can sing. They can basically totally obliterate the stereotype. And when I saw that, it was the same kind of thing, you know, except with really young children. So, welcome.
Welcome. I guess I'm going first, right? Well, my, I'm not Vinnie Spatafor, okay? My name is Gene DeMertz, and I just want, you know the basics, so I just want to give you my impression of, of Bridges, okay? At first, when Lisa approached me to become a volunteer, I said, "Boy, I don't know if I can do this" because I wasn't sure if I could deal one-on-one with kids between nine and 10. Well, I did volunteer, and I have to tell you, it was an experience that I probably will take all the way to the end. These kids, these, I had, I was fortunate, I had four young men in my group. And we just hit it off unbelievably. We, we talked about, they talked to me about their family. They talked to me about their culture, and they talked to me about, you know, just one-on-one. It was unbelievable. I, I, I'm still flabbergasted about this. I was part of the first group. So my group, and they were with me, the, and, but my group was in the fall. And after that, I had the opportunity to give back to them. And I gave back to them, you know, my culture, what I did for a living, my military service, and, you know, we just, we just hit it off, the four, my four boys, unbelievably. So I, I'm very proud that I came. I'm definitely gonna go back in the fall. Did you hear that, right, Lisa? And I just couldn't do the second because there was commitments didn't allow it at the time. But I have to tell you that I also want to thank the teachers and that were in, the teacher, Mrs. Tetra, and the, and her volunteers because they actually put the program together for us. We had homework, believe it or not. I hadn't done homework since college, so you know. But it was really, really, for me, it was uplifting, and I don't know what else to say other than thank you, teachers and my group, especially the first six of us. We, we did a little bit trial and error, but we came through it with flying colors. So thank you for listening.
Good evening, I'm Barbara McQuirk. I was part of the first Bridges program with my husband, Tom, and Jane, and, um, Jean. Jane and Jean. And Tom and I went on and continued to do the second program. It was just a wonderful experience for us. I taught high school for 44 years, so going into a third grade was a brand-new experience for me. And I learned something very quickly. They never sit still. Ever, ever. But it was really a wonderful experience. As Grace told you, I did teach them. I was an English teacher, so I taught them how to do diamond poems. And you heard her say that she really enjoyed doing that, and she did a beautiful job with it. And we learned a lot about their cultures. They, as, as Jean said, they share everything with you. But I think one of the things that, that was most impressive to me is, is the building of relationships. We had gone back to Mrs. Tetra's class. We had been invited to come back to see her group when they were doing their biography projects. And we went in, and the kids were very excited to see us, and they shared their projects with us. But then as we were leaving, my husband and I were walking down the hall, and Mr. Lewandowski- But then as we were leaving, my husband and I were walking down the hall and Mr. Lewandowski's classroom door happened to be open and that was our second group. And a couple of the kids saw us as we were walking by. Well, that totally disrupted his class because pretty soon, not just two or three, but the entire class was at the door. They were out in the corridor with us. We were getting hugs. They wanted to know, were we coming back? Were we coming to the celebration? They wanted to know about the other people that were in the group, the Alpha members, were they coming back as well? So you knew that this meant something to them, that it was a relationship that we had connected with them and that they really enjoyed the program and they really, they loved being with us. And I want to echo what Jean said, too, that you have a wonderful principal in that school that is so engaged in the activities of her students and you have fabulous teachers that are so dedicated to these kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jane Crocker and not related to the famous Crockers. But I too was involved in the program with two different classes and with some of the same people. And I found it very, very rewarding. I had been a preschool teacher, so I was used to children, but not actually third grade. But I think it's a great program that connects young children with older folks and I enjoyed the time, every time, with the children. It was probably the highlight of my week. And I learned a lot about school in 2016 and 2015 as opposed to when I was in grammar school in the 50s and I'm one of the ones that told the children, we went home for lunch. And our mothers cooked lunch and my father even came home for lunch and they kind of couldn't understand that. They were in awe and they said, one of them said, you mean you didn't have a cafeteria? I said, no, we didn't. A lot of our moms were home then, so we walked home. We had an hour for lunch. And that was kind of unreal, unreal for them to understand. And I noticed a lot of the differences in school now. I noticed the children have a little more freedom and moving about. I think we had to stay in our seats unless we had to go to the restroom or whatever. We weren't allowed to get up and move about or fidget at all, I think. So, but I learned a lot from the children. I really enjoyed it. And I had four girls in my group and they liked jewelry a lot. So every week when I wore my earrings or necklaces, I had to take them off and show them to them and pass them around. So I felt I made really close ties with the children and I look forward to being with them each week and I look forward to being in the program again. And I think the teachers went above and beyond their normal day to include this in their program and I think they did a great job as well as the principal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, my name is Susan Tetrow, for those of you that I haven't met before. And I really, they've all, they've said it all. I guess the only thing that I can add to this that hasn't been said yet is that the relationships that have grown over the last eight weeks, not just between students and the Bridge Partners, but even the teachers and the Bridge Partners, have been great. I mean, coming in, asking them, you know, at a moment's notice, or, well, actually, I gave them a week, I think, to, would you mind coming to a writing celebration? And all of them showed up. And it was great for my, for our classroom because I have a lot of kids that may not have somebody that can come in and see their project and they work hard on it. So when their Bridge Partner walked in and they saw that they were there for them, it's just such a great opportunity for all of them. The other thing is my class has also been known to see them walking down the hall because we had it first and to run out to say hello. And I really look forward to doing the program again. I really think that it means a lot to the kids. I think it means a lot to us. And as we all know, it takes a village to raise a child and they're my co-partners in raising these children because I think we all have a part in that. So I thank them heartfully because I think they've done an awesome job with coming in. We were, we were the pilot program, so we'll, you know, get better over time and I just see that it's just a great opportunity for all of us.
Not much left to be said, but. No, really, it was an amazing program. I think that that whole celebrity status thing, they clearly had it. I won't forget when we went to go look at Sue's class, their writing projects, my kids were like, did you see who's in there? All excitement over their Bridges Partners being in there. I think they had an opportunity to work on speaking skills. I think they had an opportunity to work on listening skills, presenting material in a knowledgeable way. That bond that Riker talked about truly was there. The bond actually was more than just with their Bridges Partners. It became also with their group and then talking with other groups as well. So I think there was a lot of spillover from the skills that they learned with their Bridges Partners to the classroom as a whole. Speaking about their past and learning about their past, kids would get all excited when they come in after doing their Home Connection to talk about what they discovered with their families. And then to, we had a Bridges Partner that brought in a big map and everybody huddled around and pointed about, you know, where generations from past had come from. So we had all these map skills going on. It was a lot of fun and it was very motivating for kids. I think that each and every time they came, kids would eagerly await for them and really looked forward to the program. I look forward to doing it again as well.
Could I just say something to Joyce? Joyce didn't.
Say her name.
Sorry.
But there's, sometimes Fitchburg has that real small-town feel. So I got to give a shout out to my mom who's here because my mom was in Joyce's class. She volunteered as one of the Alpha members. And I just want you to know, and she's probably shared it with you because she's like that, but she just thought you were the greatest. And I think that maybe another realization on people's parts is just really kind of the job of teaching in 2016, too, right? So, I mean, they were just, I would just tell you, I'm sure my mom will tell you, but she just thought you were wonderful and you had the classroom so well planned.
Thank you.
Now you know your mom is a celebrity.
Yes, that's right. Riker, Riker was your grandmother who sewed the quilts? And kids, you were impressive, my God, as third graders to present like that, that's awesome. But you should tell your grandmother that my mom came and showed her grandchildren those quilts and is very touched by it. It's got a special place in the house. So that's a cool thing that you guys did.
Lisa, did you want to?
I'm going to be very brief.
Excellent.
I'm sure you want to get on to the rest of your meeting. My name is Lisa Moisen and I work at Fitchburg State University. This is exactly the kind of program that the university loves to do. We collaborate, we get to bring various groups together, the university gets to create this safe academic space where we can come together, we can collaborate, and we can be innovative. So not only were we working with the McKay Arts Academy and the Fitchburg State University Adult Learners in the Fitchburg Area Program, but this wonderful not-for-profit organization called Bridges Together from Sudbury, Massachusetts. This is the first time that they had ever worked with a program that had a university involved. How exciting is that, right? And they're a tiny little not-for-profit organization started in Sudbury, probably about 15 years ago. And they've now spread to almost every single state.
Wow.
So that's exciting. They developed the curriculum. We had to go to, a team of us had to do a full one-day training. All of our Alpha volunteers had to do another training as well so that we could learn the curriculum, what was behind the curriculum, why was it designed the way that it was. And so there was a lot of training that was involved with us doing it. They came out to us to do the training. So I definitely want to make sure that we thank Bridges Together for the work that they did and for whoever our anonymous donor is, whoever is out there who donated, because it really helped us to get started. The program is nice. The program is sweet. The program is kind and it's obvious why we should be doing it. But while we were doing the program, something else was happening as well. And that was alluded to very briefly, but that was really the piece of the program where it's fighting ageism. And what Bridges Together always says, this program is a vaccination against ageism. And we have to start when the kids are young. And that prejudice goes both ways, doesn't it? Being older and being told, your time is up, you're done, you can't learn any new tricks, right? You're not learning anymore. Somehow we think that ends, you have nothing to contribute back. So there's fighting that. But also, I think, the ageism against really young students where we look at them and we say, you don't live, wait till you live in the real world for a little while. Your world is just as real as my world, right? Or, you know, that they don't have a voice and they can't give back. So this particular program really created that safe space where we could build those bridges, right? Happy to say, so we'll talk a little bit about the future, happy to say Lemonster is finally starting this program.
Oh, great.
So they're going to do it at Johnny Appleseed with the Lemonster Senior Center. So I'm very excited that our sister city is also going to be doing the program as well. And hopefully there are some collaborations there as well. We applied for a grant, so through the Music Drives Us Foundation, which is funded by Ernie Bach Jr., so if you live in Massachusetts for any length of time, we can all hum the tune together, right? He's a musician. And we decided that the McKay Arts Academy didn't have a formal musical instrument lesson program. So that was one need. And we could have applied for the funding and just met that need and said, let's just do an after-school music lesson program. But we had already established this Bridges Together program in our intergenerational work with one another. And so we decided to take it a step further. And the grant actually that we wrote and I hope, I hope we get, we'll let you know, is an intergenerational after-school music lesson program. So we hope that we can take the solid work that we've been doing in the classroom and then perhaps do something after school where we could have small groups of people taking piano together so we have our older adults and our younger students as well. So we're looking to expand, but the university is very proud to be part of this program. And thank you for allowing us to go a little overtime here tonight, but it was, it's a great program. And so when anybody asks you what's new and what's good that's happening in the Fitchburg Public Schools, you can tell them about Bridges Together. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
What a terrific program.
Yes, Sally.
Just a comment, I want to say thank you to all the people who are young, all the people who are young at heart. And remind everyone that the Fitchburg State University program is Alpha Adult Learning in the Fitchburg Area, which I believe is now maybe 12 years old. These are very affordable classes for anyone watching. And they're five-week classes. They happen twice in the fall, twice in the spring. And the Alpha community, my mother was a longtime member of Alpha, and the Alpha community is really special and it draws people from all over the region. So to see that, you know, the magic that happens at McKay in the college side of the building, you know, is happening in the, you know, student side of the building is tremendous. And I'm so glad that you all got to meet everyone because we are a community and what you three children said was so smart and so articulate and so beautifully, you know, beautifully interpreted. I mean, you really represented your experience very well to us, so thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent?
I appreciate what Lisa said about the ageism and the two directions because, you know, we're in the schools all the time and we see young people. And I know that oftentimes, once you haven't been in school for a long time, the impressions that people have about young people today, especially young people in public schools, you know, they're all hoodlums, they're all this, they're all that, they don't do what we do, they, you know. And to have an opportunity to be in our classrooms and see the fabulous kids that we have in our schools that we see every day. And I always say that if every taxpayer could spend one day, one day, in a public school, they would really be very happy about the way their money is being spent and the kids that they're educating. So I really applaud you for, you know, taking the time to do this, be part of a program and clearly not just give of your time, but, you know, give of your heart and of yourselves. And clearly you've seen that, boy, you know, you've been taken in, you know, in more way than one. And that's a really good thing. So thank you to Fitchburg State University again for great partnership. I don't think we applauded the teachers, you didn't get your own applause. And to all the parents who came here today, I know you all have busy schedules, but you're here today with your children and supporting it. And we're glad to support you and thank you for supporting our programs. Thanks. Just a couple of announcements first. One is I've been, first of all, I'm wearing the Assumption College T-shirt tonight because Jeremy and I were at a, we were actually at the Mass Insight Awards Ceremony three weeks ago. And the speaker was from Washington DC. And he spoke about Michelle Obama's activity and initiative called Reaching Higher. And the purpose of that initiative was to raise the consciousness of all students about college education and university. And one of the ways to do it is to encourage everyone to wear a T-shirt or some sort of apparel from their college or university. And I see that we've got a couple here tonight. So I went to Assumption College. Bob?
You, Massey, I'm Hurst.
Oh, you don't have a T-shirt, but where did you go to school?
Brandeis University.
Boston, in order, Boston University, University of Massachusetts, Boston, Santa Monica's Community College. And I graduated from Harvard Extension School and I'm in graduate school right now at Harvard.
Northern Michigan University, University of Wyoming College of Law, and University at Albany. And I teach at Fitchburg State.
Keene State College, Bachelors and Masters.
Hoxton University, Bachelors and Clark for Masters.
Johnson and Wales University for Associates and Bachelors, then Masters at Fitchburg State.
Great. So we have all these different, Dina, that you're interested?
Fitchburg State and Mr. State.
All right.
There you go.
Perfect. So tomorrow at 1:00, there's going to be a special activity at the high school with the seniors, hopefully to get a photograph. And we're part of this bigger initiative that's happening tomorrow across the country. And then I've also sent out emails just encouraging staff members in all of our schools to come in tomorrow and wear something from their colleges or university and to just engage one student.
Nice.
You know, they can do more, but to just engage one student in a conversation about their college experience and, you know, encourage that student, you know, to think about college. Also, we have never done this before, but I reached out and have created a partnership with Boston Wise, which is an organization that's based at Stone Hill College in Easton, Mass. And they create exchange programs with Chinese students who come here. So right now, we're scheduled to have 13, I think. I have found hosts for 13 students and they would like to send 17 here to Fitchburg. So I'm still looking for spots for a few more students.
Andrea, what are the requirements? Do they have to have their own bedroom? Kids have to have like a dedicated bedroom? Is that?
They, not bedroom necessarily, but a space with a bed or a pullout or.
Yeah, okay.
And I can send out the information. I think I've sent it out, but there's, and they're providing funding for the host for each student of $700 a week for the two weeks. They're going to be here from May 9th to May 20th. There will be programs and activities for the hosts and the students together. They're all going to be at Fitchburg High School. Steve Lowny, who is one of the guidance counselors there, he's the liaison. So he's the one that's going to be working closely and they're going to set up a buddy system. So each of the Chinese students will have a Fitchburg High School student as their partner and buddy for the two weeks. And then on the weekends, there will be activities either just for all of the students or for students and their host families. So great opportunity. And there are components of the program which would allow them to provide us with some funding, that we could start a separate fund at the community foundation so that the eventual goal is that we can fund some of our high school students to go and spend two weeks in China. So I'll keep you posted on that and let you know how it's going. Next is, as you know, we were looking to have a full-time special education director. Last year, the way we did the process is that we appointed Alicia Barasby, who was with us as one of the assistant directors. who was with us, uh, as one of the Assistant Directors of Special Education. We appointed her as an interim. And then the process was to, in the, um, New Year, begin a search. We did create a search, had a search committee, interviewed a number of candidates. And then there were two finalists that were sent to cabinet and we did another series of interviews. So I'm here tonight, uh, to tell you that, uh, my recommendation to you is to, um, to appoint Alicia Barasby because there are a number of appointments that are the appointment of the school committee. And I'm bringing you a recommendation. So Alicia is here, uh, tonight. I'd like to invite her to come up. You probably know more about Alicia than you would about another candidate. But she's been in the district for quite a while. She's had a lot of different roles. Uh, and, you know, I have to say, in working with her, she really brings a seriousness to the work. Uh, she is able to work at a legislative level and a regulatory level, but also is able to work as a, as close in a one-on-one situation, either with a student or a parent or a team, as you would want anyone to work. And Pittsburgh is a hands-on place. It's not a place that has any kind of a balcony that you can hide in. You know, it only pretty much has first floors, maybe second floor. But that's about as far away from any issues that you can get. So, uh, I'm really pleased with, uh, the work that she has done. As you can well imagine, and this is not why I'm recommending Alicia, but the pool of Special Education Directors is a very shallow pool. But even in a very deep pool, I believe Alicia would, you know, be a very strong candidate. Uh, but knowing, you know, what she's been able to do here and what she can do for us. Uh, and she also brings, um, a second language and a bilingual component to the position, which, as you can well imagine, in a lot of situations, in dealing with very difficult conditions with parents and all, to have someone come and be able to speak to you in your language about things so emotional sometimes, so complex as special education issues is a huge help. So I bring Alicia forward as the candidate that I recommend to you for any questions you may have or anything that Alicia would like to say.
Would you like to say a few words first, Alicia?
Um, thank you very much for, um, saying such wonderful things. I, I'm very honored. Um, I really enjoy working in Pittsburgh, um, and have worked here for almost 10 years now. And just to feel very lucky to be able to work with the families that I've been able to work with. So, and being able to continue that work.
Questions?
I'd like to make a recommendation. This, this is an action item.
Yes.
And I'd like to take this out of order. Everybody?
Second.
Second, it's been, uh, the motion's been made and seconded?
I, I think we might have a reservation. Andre, did we receive a salary sheet for Alicia?
No, but we're going into executive session and I can, yeah, yeah.
In a second?
Well, you've already gotten a second.
Yep, got a second, so motions on the floor, discuss.
Okay.
For discussion?
Discussion.
Any discussion?
Um, I just really, um, I've worked with Alicia for, uh, different, on different projects that I do in the schools. And she is, um, she's right there. She's, she's on top of, on top of everything with compassion and humanity. And I think that the patience, um, that is required in special education is just, is a patience that very few of us have to ever have in our daily lives. And you have, you all have to have it constantly. So, um, that's my discussion item.
Alicia, what are your goals in the position?
Um, my goals are to increase our, um, specialized instruction for our students, to really hone in on what that is for our students, as well as increasing our inclusive practices across the district.
Any other discussion?
I'd like to make a recommendation that, uh, to accept, uh, Superintendent's recommendation to approve Alicia Barascope as the Director of Special Education.
Second.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, welcome.
So the way the structure works is, uh, Rowan is the Pupil Personnel Director. So Alicia works with her, um, on, 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 you know, some of the issues come to her level. But now we have someone in the field who's directly, their sole responsibility is special education. For a long time, we did not have a Special Education Director.
Right, yeah. Very good.
Now, I'm sorry to make you wait. We have Joe Fermanni here, uh, and the Veterans Commissioner, Michelle Marino. And I received, I think, an email or a call, come on up. I wanna say three weeks ago, a month ago, maybe, about this idea of the Veterans Memorial Moving Wall. And, uh, it only took me a minute to say, when does this happen? How do we make this happen in Pittsburgh? Uh, so Joe's gonna talk to you about it. Um, this is something that's gone on in a lot of other communities. But I think when, when you hear about it, um, you know, there'll really be a sense of, we need to share this with our community. So, uh, Joe and Michelle, welcome.
Thanks for having us. I reached out to the Superintendent, the Mayor of Pittsburgh. The Moving Wall, hosted by the Veterans Memorial Fund, is gonna be coming to the Twin Cities, November 3rd through November 6th. Um, they chose Lemmister as the host city, but it is a North Central Twin City event. It's not a Lemmister-Fitzburg, so we really do want Pittsburgh to be well-represented there. My responsibility is now that it's coming, most of it's been turned over to the city and the local veterans organizations, including Michelle. My main goal here now is to help with the fundraising and, more importantly, is spreading the word. Vietnam Veteran Memorial Fund, they really stress having the schools attend, middle schools, high school. They wanna educate these kids, 'cause now they know it's really just a lot of, a little allotted amount of time. You know, US history, then they move on. So they really want the, the kids to come down and learn, you know, about the Vietnam Memorial, what these people went through, even how they were treated when they came home. There's 300-plus names on that wall from Central Mass. Three certainly from Pittsburgh, and I don't know if it's more, and 11 from Lemmister. So this is, this is really a local event. And it's not just the wall coming up here, you know, so people can have some closure or, you know, I can't get down to Washington. When this truck is stripped, the truck turns into a mobile learning center. The kids will go in and they'll actually be taught, you know, what they're gonna be walking into. It's not, it's not a festival. But there's also, they call it a wall of face. They put, they're gonna put these 354 names to faces, uh, any stories that came with them. They're gonna be educated before they even walk out onto that field. And it's set up just like the memorial down in Washington DC. You're funneled through, it's not just people walking up to it. It's, it's really a, a structured event and, and it's, it's important. My kids know how I feel about veterans. We do flags for soldiers every year. We do Christmas trees for soldiers every single year. So my kids get it. But the other kids, it's, it really is, it's textbook now. So the, the Memorial Fund really, really wants these kids to understand what it is they're learning. So the best thing for me to do was to reach out to the mayor, reach out to the Superintendent to say, we want these kids to come.
Can you tell a little bit more? So it's a replica of the, uh, wall in Washington. I, I hadn't, never seen the wall up until last year. And, uh, it's incredible experience. It's a very, very powerful experience.
If you've seen the size of it, this is, this is half the size.
Okay.
So it's, it's still, it's still a monument.
Yeah.
It's 250 feet and I think at the center, it's 10 feet tall.
Wow.
Um, it's gonna, it's, it's, it's gonna be open from November 3rd to November 6th, 24 hours. Because there will be people that, they want their quiet time. They won't go to the middle of the night.
Right.
And it really, I chose to go through the VVMF because I was really impressed with their program. I was happy they accepted it. And, you know, we're looking forward to coming in now. As we get closer to it, there will be a press release for the schools. There'll be a sign-up sheet. And, um, Rick Vautour, head of Director of Services in Pittsburgh, Lemmister, I'm sorry, he is, he is coordinating the dates and volunteers and, you know, when these schools will come. So the sooner I can get you the forms, I mean, we know it's in November, so school will be back in session. But November's coming quick. I mean, I can't believe it's end of April.
So how do schools determine that they, they, they apply? Where they?
Well, like you said, there'll be, there'll be a sign-up sheet. You know, there'll be the, there'll be the sign-up sheet for the, for the parents, you know, to okay it. There'll be a sign-up sheet for how many kids you think will attend. And then coordination between Pittsburgh Public Schools and Rick on timing. Because, like, like day one will really be focused on the veterans themselves, opening ceremonies, stuff like that. But then there'll be days that it will be, days and times that will be actually set aside for...
Like particular classrooms to go or individual kids can just go?
Um, they prefer it be the, the classrooms themselves, you know, because they wanna, they do wanna educate them before they walk out there.
Right.
Because there will be people there that won't expect, you know, kids to be having, you know, a good old time. Right? So they really do wanna educate them as a group and then send them out as a group.
So the fundraising component, 'cause one of the issues that we have all the time is the transportation.
Right.
You know, is that a part of the consideration for fundraising or, um, 'cause if we just notify parents and we let them go, that's one thing. But, you know, for us to, you know, bring a whole school over there, then we have busing costs and transportation costs. So, and it would have to be almost pretty much a selection of, of students across the, you know, we'd figure out all of those dynamics, but...
And Lemmister's in the same position too. So what I'll do is, there, there is a meeting on Wednesday with, with the heads of the veterans departments. And I'll make sure it, it's brought up. Because the fundraising isn't just, isn't just to bring the wall up itself. It's, it's for stuff like, like this. It's to make sure the site is handicap accessible.
Right.
And to make sure people can get there.
So is the, is there a city, so is there a, a group from Pittsburgh that are also part of this planning group? Uh, with, with you, Michelle, or houses?
I sat in on the first meeting. Uh, but for the most part, since it's gonna be housed in Lemmister, they're the host. I've spoken with Rick a few times. My main reason for being here this evening is to show my support. I think it's very important for our children to be taught about the Vietnam War. Um, and you can teach them all day in the classroom, but an experience like this, when they walk in and they're seeing the pictures on the walls and they're seeing the names, I believe it's a very important teaching moment. A lot of our kids, their grandfathers are Vietnam veterans. And it, it makes it real. And I, I think that's important. And especially the way the Vietnam vets got treated when they got back. They deserve every bit of respect from every generation.
Um, the United, Pittsburgh United Way is involved, um, the volunteer side of it. So as, as many groups from Pittsburgh as I can get, I've been, I've been asking. And, you know, again, the coordination's going through Rick Vautour, so I'm giving them his contact information.
I would, I would like to see all of our eighth graders go because they go to Washington, a number of them, in, in the spring. And so if we, even if we, the school department paid for buses for the eighth graders, I would be supportive of that. I've probably been to Washington 15, 16 times and have been by the, the wall every time. And you still see veterans there at the wall. You see notes and artifacts left at the wall. And those are picked up every, every day from the wall. And they are stored by the Smithsonian, and all the notes and everything that are left. And I think if our, our students had a chance to get some more information before, um, you know, they went in the spring, it might even motivate some of the students who, hey, I don't know if I wanna go or not, might motivate them to go. And, uh, I think it would be something that we should, we should discuss and talk about.
Well, the, um, where is this going to be located physically?
Under Park.
So, um, MART probably goes, I mean, after-school MART buses, I don't know. I mean, I'm just thinking of cost, you know, costing. Um, I mean, the buses, we have buses that go to Lemmister. And they go, you know, I mean, during the school day, obviously, would be optimal. But...
But we can, you know, we'll...
Let's, let's discuss all of that and see what, you know...
The goal is, you know, I think, my goal was to show the support of this. I think it's really important. And, and even, you mentioned it in passing, but even the idea that, you know, that's a war where a lot of veterans came back and that there weren't parades and a lot of welcome mats and things like that. And that's a piece of this that people stop thinking about and don't think about. And even though it feels contemporary to me, because I was in the draft, I realize that it is no longer anywhere near contemporary. And there are millions and millions of kids who, it's just another story and another thing. So whatever we can do to bring that to life and support you, we, we will do that. Just keep us in the email loop and in the loop of what's going on with the plans.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and, um, Michelle and Joe, Joe, it's so nice to see you. And I, I do wanna point out, this is Mr. Fermanni, who has done so much for South Street School. And so much, you know, grounds and playgrounds and, and structural, you know, public works kinds of, um, projects in our schools. Thank you so much for that. And, um, it's, it's always great to have you here and to hear about this. And I wanted to let both of you know, um, we have Authors Night at Pittsburgh Public Library. And this year, we kind of, uh, we did a wonderful piece, um, at Veterans Day in November on the Civil War. Well, I was just thinking, you know, we're kind of planning ahead, but I'm thinking, well, this is perfect timing. And I'll talk to Ed Bergman over at Lemmister Library as well, because I, I teach, um, at Alpha and I'm at Lemmister a lot. But let me reach out and see about coordinating some, a couple of evening programs that would also shine a light. So things could be, you know, again, dignified, the focus on the Vietnam War, and then, um, acknowledging and celebrating the visit of this, what sounds like, you know, an amazing, you know, sculptural experience for people. So, um, I have that on my post-it note and I'll get on it.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for coming, really appreciate it and looking forward to helping support this initiative.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, we're going to adjourn to executive session and, um, and I think we have to take a roll call for that purpose.
Are we, you know, that's okay.
We're going to, we're going to reconvene for the, we're going to reconvene for the purposes of continuing the rest of the agenda.
Okay.
Ray?
I'm, no, I was, I was gonna, I was gonna watch the budget, but I'm not gonna stay through executive.
Okay, alright.
I'm sure I'll see the highlights of it.
He, he had heard a rumor that we were gonna cut his budget 100%, so he's like...
It's only 90%, Ray, don't worry about it. Thanks, Ray.
Thanks.
We'll take roll call, Juan.
Yes.
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 So, yes, so adjourned.
This is familiar to all of you because you've seen it in other formats. Uh, is a first run-through of our, um, FY17 budget. So this page here, uh, is very familiar. It's basically the setup that shows us the net school spending. Uh, and the Chapter 78. In the, uh, pink section, you have what the Chapter 78 was last year, 45,000, 45,700,337. And what it is this year, of 47,362,885. So, uh, it, you know, this shows you in charts, you know, each year in the, since, um, FY13, where our Chapter 70 has been, where our budget is. our Chapter 70 has been, where our budget is. And you can see that the final budget is the sixty-two three sixty-three three ten, and then the sixty-four six, three sixty-eight oh three nine. And that's a change of around $2 million. And one of the key components of the budget and the increase in Chapter 70 has been due to an increase of enrollment. We've had an increase of enrollment of about 150 students. And, you know, that has provided us with, with some really good resource. So the next portion of, I think I'll read it up here, it's easier, is the direct spending budget, and that's the fifty-one four, and then we're looking at fifty-two three for next year. So what happens every year is we work with the city, and Bob talks to the treasurer, and we look at, you know, where the city is, and they basically, you know, kind of see what they can do, what kind of a number we would be looking at, you know, for an increase of the coming year. And then, you know, our goal is to balance our needs and the resources that we have, you know, to have a balanced budget. You've seen, you can see the growth in inflation is marked there, the labor increases, you know, each year, the health insurance increases each year in purple, and then our enrollment, you know, kinda carries through that, and you can see that it's, you know, kind of gone up and down. Last year, we had a very small enrollment, I wanna say nine students. So the jump from nine to 155, you know, is, is really helpful. And then it's also retaining our students, and at the student support meeting earlier, we talked about that. We talked about all of the initiatives and the work we've been doing to maintain our students.
There's a lot of different colors and lines here. Really fiscal years thirteen through fifteen are based on historical information, and the green is the labor increase. And when you look at FY '13, for those of the school community members who have been here, it's more than a few years now, that was the year that we received over $3 million increase in our budget. So that's why the labor increased so much in terms of, as a percentage, because we went out and hired a lot of staff and put in some infrastructure that we just didn't have before then. I think, just to the general reader looking at this, is looking, number one, as Superintendent Ravenel said, the enrollment increase has been like a wave. It goes up one year, down the next, up, down. This year, it's gone up for next year's funds. But also looking at the years in which the green bar is taller than the red bar, because the red bar is the growth inflation factor set by the state. And when you have the green above the red, it's kind of a little bit of an imbalance. And then also, the percentage increase of the health insurance, when you look back at, you know, thirteen and fourteen, it goes around a little over 4%. Then in fifteen, with the PEC agreement, the city saved money, and actually, that ended up contributing to the supplemental allocations that we received last year. And again, this year, the growth inflation factor is actually negative, so there was no inflation. It's calculated by the state. So these are just some key data points to keep in mind as we're looking at, you know, some big numbers here.
So now, on this slide, these are the different components of the indirect costs. So there are two different things. There's what we receive in Chapter 70, and then there's our budget, and then there's also what is not a part of our budget but are indirects costs to the city, and that number can change. And you can see that, you know, in FY '08, it was thirteen thousand one hundred and ninety-two.
Thirteen million.
Thirteen million, I'm sorry.
These are thousands, all these numbers.
Yeah, that would be really a good budget. It's the way you folks do your, put your calculations, those of us who don't do numbers every day, just take it for sight. And then we're up to seventeen million three eighty in that. So, you know, that piece of indirect costs, which is your healthcare, and then the charter school tuition.
And these are the biggest line items in the indirect costs.
And school choice. So those things are all, you know, added in and counted in. And then, these are, if you remember, and I've shown this before, we had the Accelerated Improvement Plan, and that was a, an initiative that we worked out with the state, and it was at a time when, you know, we were really struggling academically, and it was, we're looking at like, what are we going to do to get a hold of this and really begin to improve the district? At that time, there were no Level One schools in the district, and it was really something that needed to be addressed. There was a more complex Accelerated Improvement Plan, and then this year, if you remember, I've sent you this, basically, I took that one-page sheet of the Accelerated Improvement Plan and made a single slide for each of the five strategic objectives. So this one is to ensure high-quality curriculum and instructional practice. And if you think back to the student support meeting we just had, that's what that meeting was all about.
Yeah.
Was, you know, all of the initiatives that we've put in to raise the quality of our curriculum and instruction, and Paula referred to the, which is now known as the EHA, was referred to before as the ALI, the Accelerated Academic, Advanced Academic Learning Initiative, which is now the Elementary Honors Academy, or EHA. Those initiatives were all things that were developed based on this Accelerated Improvement Plan, saying, here's what we're going to do, you know, to keep that going.
Can I ask you, Andre?
Yep, stop me at any time.
Could we go back to the indirect cost chart for a second?
Yep.
I just have a question for Bob. Just on that retirement item, is that fairly consistent? I mean, do you see that, is there gonna be a year that hits where a lot of people, where that number really increases a lot, or?
That number, if you look over on the right-hand column, the percentage increase.
Yeah.
That actually has had the smallest percentage increase of the, I'll call it the large line items.
Yeah.
So that one has been a little bit, has been a little bit more consistent.
Yeah.
You know, the largest one in terms of dollars is the healthcare for active and retired, which started out in '08, or, you know, again, these are just two reference points, at just about six and a half million. And now, for next year, it's projected to be almost nine million.
Right.
So, and that number.
But you don't see what's happened, what happened in healthcare, being that kind of a jump to go up to the retirement piece? I guess that's what I'm wondering, like, do we have a cohort that's just gonna really change the budget outlook at some point?
I don't, I don't know. I don't, just looking at past performance, the ones that we've had, the biggest increase have been kind of the middle two line items there.
Okay. On that, that seventeen number, that FY '17 number for school choice out and charter school?
Yeah.
So this is based on what people have declared now?
This is based on information from the state, there are cherry sheets.
Okay.
Kind of like the governor's budget, the House version. So these numbers may change a little bit.
Yeah, okay.
Again, based on, based on actual numbers.
Historically, do they change a lot?
Not a whole lot. I think maybe, you know, in terms of percentage, maybe two or 3%, you know, max, up or down.
Okay, all right.
It's, it's, it's pretty much like this, that, those lines. It's not like that.
Okay. Yeah, sorry, I, no.
No, don't, that's the purpose of this. So just stop me if you have questions. So the second strategic objective was to ensure job-embedded professional development. You've heard all the presentations of the principals. You know, the folk, main focus of this is the nine-day coaching model, you know, and if you go back to that year where there was a big increase in, in the staffing increase, you know, that was the year when we had the additional $3 million, and actually, what we spent some of that money on was putting back positions that had been cut over the previous four and five years. You know, at that time, I was doing PowerPoints of, here are all the positions that we've been cut over the past five years. And then part of the strategy was to not just put positions back, but that's really where, you know, and Paula took the lead on this, of embedding the coaching model. You know, not just spending money on professional development opportunities, but really creating a cadre of coaches who meet on a regular basis, and who are basically the foot soldiers who can take what it is that we're implementing it and do it at a school level, down to the level of classroom level. And three or four years ago, we took that coaching model and adapted it to a nine-day coaching cycle, so that it was not, so it really wasn't episodic anymore, but there would be a focus nine days that a coach would spend with a teacher. And we've really moved a long way from the, the time when, oh, you have a coach, oh, you're getting a coach, and it was really a, oh, you must need support, to can I have a coach come into my classroom and work with me on this, or this, or this? Because as those citizens that were here tonight, who've been into classrooms, really have gotten an opportunity to see the complexity of the work that our staff has to do today in a, in a classroom.
So, so does every teacher have the opportunity to have a coach come into the classroom at regular intervals, or?
If I might, the numbers are overwhelming at the elementary, but the plan is, through some careful scheduling, because we have the nine-day coaching cycle, and then we have what we call on-demand coaching. And every coach actually maintains a digital log of all their, and we have it all parceled out to collect data on all their contacts with teachers, the numbers, the quality. We expect every teacher to be seen through one of the two coaching models at least every other year. But what we're finding now is that we have teams like the special ed teacher and the inclusion classroom teacher will do a cycle together. We have teams that will work together, if it's a two-member team, or the ESL Special Ed Title I Classroom Teacher. So, and in order to have a larger footprint in the same amount of time, our coaches and grade-level teams of teachers are engaging in modified Japanese lesson study, where the coach will meet, they'll do pre-planning of a lesson and a curriculum piece, decide on who the instructor is, sometimes it's the coach, sometimes it's the teacher, have a fishbowl with the other teachers, and everyone has a job, meet afterwards, debrief the lesson, revise it, replan it, someone else instructs it. They may do that over two or three instructional rounds, so that every teacher on that team has the benefit of hearing the coach's insights and peer collaborative insights over a nine, a two-week session. And we've done those at South Street, Memorial, couple of grade levels, couple of different, I think they just did a lesson study at South Street, week before, or two weeks before vacation. And we do that with our DSAC partners, Bruce McDonald and Tracy Martino.
Who evaluates coaches?
In some cases, the principals, in some cases, the directors. With the shift-in math director, Eileen Spinney, Eileen and I used to run the entire coaching initiative before we had the curriculum directors. So Eileen has taken back the coaches, for the math coaches. And then I collaborate with the principals. Last year, I did the coaches. This year, the principals are doing the coaches. So we have a, kind of a shared understanding. We offer a principal-coach's breakfast at least once a year. We try to do it twice, sometimes testing gets in the way. But we reset the table with all of the administrators on what a coach's job is, and they're not many administrators, the level of confidential collaborative work that happens between a coach and a teacher. And then at the commendation grant, a couple of Saturdays ago, Robin Pierce, who's the math coach there, created, and one of my questions for her is to be able to share her work with your subcommittee, but she did a presentation on what it means to be an instructional coach, and how it works, and the kinds of tasks they do. So we try to create as much shared ownership of the coaching model, the coaches' roles and responsibilities, the outcomes and achievements, the needs for improvement, because it can't rest, it's here, but it can't rest at central office. These are, as Andre said, these are people with boots on the ground. It's a grassroots effort to engage teachers in that cycle of reflection and self-improvement. So, to me, the only way we can do that is to share, share the pie. Buying the ingredients, making it, and then celebrating how great it tastes.
The next objective, three, is ensuring a healthy school climate and culture that recognizes social, emotional needs of our students. As you know, that's a topic, again, you've heard from all the principals. These are, you know, our shift towards adjustment counselors, the kinds of programs we're doing in the schools. And then related to that also, I sent you copies of the white paper that, you know, we've been working on at MASS this year. You know, I've had the opportunity to be president of MASS. One of the things that I've been pushing for is that we take, we create position papers on these really important issues. We've got one coming out on marijuana. We did one on, we're gonna do one on the Common Core. We did one on charter schools, so that, you know, to really find the things that are common to us, and then write them coherently and get them out there so people know where we are on it. And I'm also on a committee of most of the organizations, for administrators, elementary and secondary, the school committees, association, and we're, we have a subcommittee that's working on a major initiative on this social, emotional issue, you know, and to come out with something that represents all of us, to say, here's where we are in 2017 on these issues, and use that with the legislature and, you know, with all of the different areas. We've got a meeting next week where this committee of about six people are, you know, pulling this together and working on it. Because it's pervasive, it's in every school system, it's in every school across the state and really across the country.
I think that's critical. We see it, we were talking about that at a, at a meeting at Pittsburgh State, and, and a lot of our students, you know, we said, you know, when, when we were in college, did we have this, you know, this many issues that we had to be concerned about? And it, and it starts at this level, you know, before they get to the college level.
I love this. I couldn't, when I opened my packet, I, this has just been so on my mind because of the work, the volunteer work I've been doing at one of the elementary schools, and then the middle schools, and then the therapy pet program that is now, you know, it's really, it's really there, it's really installed. And I see the, I see kids, I see kids at the kindergarten, first grade level who, who have a really difficult time holding it together, who are young, or who are disturbed, or who have not had the nurturing that I think everyone at this table has received. And I also see, when I think back, volunteering in my son's classroom in the 2009, well, we had different expectations of kids in 2009. We were just beginning the Bay State Reading Initiative, I think it was year one or two of that. And the social and emotional part, I mean, where, where kids need that, that playtime and that interaction, you know, to help the brains develop so they can actually do this important work. And I'm thinking, well, how are we supporting, you know, the work that teachers need to do on the social, emotional side? You've codified, this is great, thank you, thank you. I really hope this is the thin end, end of a, you know, a diamond-sharp and hard wedge to make the legislature understand that teachers cannot, they can't do it all. And especially with the level of needs and going to guidance coun, going to social workers versus, you know, guidance counselors. The kids that I see almost every day that I'm in a school with, you know, a therapy pet. And I see, you know, and the teachers are like, wow, they're so calm, you know? But then there's other things that will, you know, do the calming as well, which is such a wide variety of service. I applaud this, I'm so thrilled.
Thank you. The next objective is use collaborative inquiry process through PLCs and data meetings. Again, this is something you've seen our principals when they presented the data, the meetings, the, and then I did a survey to all of the principals, I don't know if I sent you a copy of it, about, you know, how many times a week do your teams of teachers meet, you know, how do you use data? I don't think I've done that. So that's a survey monkey that I sent out to the principals so that I could compare right across the district on all of these things that we talk about, how are they actually playing out in each? playing out in each school? So, I'll be working on that information, because it's part of their evaluations also. So, when I compile that info, I'll share that with you, at least a summary. It's really good information. And then finally, the last one is maximize the use of educator evaluation to enhance student outcomes. So, again, you hear about that, you've heard me talk about it, the educator evaluation component has changed a lot of things in the classroom, it's really focused us on supporting teachers and making everything the same, and Paula and I hosted Ron Noble and Abbott, Claire Abbott, from the Department of Ed, because they're looking to pilot a tool for, you know, when you're making two things the same, and the word is escaping me right now, the inter-rater reliability, you know, which you've heard me talk about. Is the teacher in this classroom being evaluated the same way as the teacher in that classroom? Is the teacher in this school being evaluated the same way as the teacher in that school? Because that's what gives credibility to the evaluation system. Well, this pilot, which is really good, it has snippets of a classroom practice, and then it has formal evaluation tools so that all of our administrators could watch this thing, and then do the evaluation tool, and then sit and discuss, okay, how did you evaluate it? How did you evaluate this piece? And either realize how common their evaluations were, or how far apart their evaluations were. So, it's still a rough tool, and they're just piloting it, but I think we're going to hear more about it at the Urban Superintendent's, I'm pretty sure we've got them scheduled to present, because that's something that we all can use, and not only in this district, but what really needs to happen is until there's inter-rater reliability from one school system to the other, it's really not very useful, because if, if school systems are using the evaluation system differently, then you're not comparing apples and apples. So, the purpose of this system, and Massachusetts is getting requests now saying from other states, if you get this worked out, could you share it with us? So, it's, and when people invite us to the party, we go. So, when, you know, we got the call that said, can we come and talk to you about this? We'd like to pilot this, we're like, okay, when, when would you like to come and talk to it? Because if we can implement it in our school system, it makes our evaluation system even better.
If I just could add, it also helps support our new administrators, because one of the biggest challenges we have, we have 13 new administrators this year, and we have three years of experience now with our veteran folks. How do you ramp up 13 people without some huge, I mean, we use rest of the top money to do a lot of that work, and they're putting together this suite of tools available through the DESE that will be free.
Free. And they will come and do the training for us, and we know both Ron Noble and Claire, they're really great, great people, they're going to come and do the training, and then they train us, and then we're able to carry it on and do it ourselves in the district. So, then these are just little snippets. I asked every principal to send me something that's kind of a highlight, you know, of their school. They sent me dozens, and I can provide all of those for you, but you already know many of them, but I thought as part of this presentation, it's good for us to remind ourselves, you know, where we've been and what we've accomplished. So, this is actually, was talked about today at the subcommittee meeting, and our young student representatives talked about it at Pittsburgh High. And then here, this is the cyber patriot here at Memorial, and at the middle school kids, that was the first time they'd ever done that, you know, that was a great new initiative, which we hope to continue, and one of our staff members continued that program in a small after-school initiative. And then there's Mr. Landry, he came and talked about the flipped classroom, you know, and the work that he's doing, and again, being, you know, recognized beyond, beyond the walls of Pittsburgh for the work that he's doing.
Could I share something on that?
Yeah.
Because I, for students that I teach in Maynard, one student, her senior project was on flipped learning, and in the research, Mr. Landry kept coming up.
Wow.
I said, I know him. I think I interned with him. So, she interned with him this year, he, he gave her this invaluable experience, she was blown away by what she saw, and so, so I know I need to write something up about that so it can go into his evaluation, because it's incredible, but.
Part of his portfolio.
But, yeah, just, and she couldn't stop talking about her experience with him, so that was cool.
Nice.
Then here with Long Joe, you remember the Helping Hands Group, we had them here to recognize them. Beth, you were there, we went to the Fleet Center, not the Fleet Center.
Foxborough.
Foxborough, Foxborough, we went to Foxborough, and folks were recognized, and then, and then this year is fully implementing the pre-AP program through Mass Insight, so, you know, that's that other component of the Mass Insight program at McKay, lots of honorable mentions and work and art. I have not gotten to Fruitlands yet, I think the opening of that show was last week, some of the art students from, from McKay Arts Academy, and then they came in seventh in the spelling bee. For Crocker, a commendation, a National Blue Ribbon School Grant, and that's what Paula was talking about, she was part of that presentation, right, Ms. Pierce, on this commendation component, and then as their 21st century, they're one of our 21st century sites, and they were noted as an exemplary site. A lot of these are very familiar, you've met all these people, the Safety Patrol at Rheingold, and then Rheingold has really been working to develop some new partnerships with some of the counseling agencies, you know, in the city. At South Street, they received that $4,000 grant from the Community Foundation, and that work is happening to provide field trips and professional development for third and fourth-grade teachers in science. And at Goodrich, the work with DCU Bank, Mount Wachusett, and other community assets to help students learn financial and life skills, that's a component that's being implemented at Goodrich. And then this other piece is they continue to work with Pittsburgh State using the Goodrich, the new labs and the new science center at Pittsburgh State University. In technology, you've heard about the state-of-the-art wireless network, the wiring is all done, and now we're continuing, this is all that E-Rate money that's being used. The Life Sciences Grant for 3D printers at Pittsburgh High School, and I have to tell you, my son needed a cap on his tooth, and he went to a dentist, and the dentist put a movie projector, literally, I'm using terms that aren't correct, but basically took a movie in his mouth of the existing tooth. Then that movie went into a computer, and that computer made a 3D-printed cap identical to the, to his tooth, and the whole thing took probably one-quarter of the amount of time that it used to take to do the same job. So, when you look at exposing our students early on to things like 3D printers, it's not just to make toys. All of these things are going to have, you know, really incredible application to great jobs.
Isn't there that kid, that college kid who just made himself orthodontics?
Yeah, so, yeah.
And so now, of course, all the orthodontists are saying, you can't do that.
You can't do that, right. Well, of course, but you know what, they're all going to be working for him at some point.
Yeah, I know.
But what, but one thing I can still tell you, though, is that you need a 3D printer to print money after your son goes to the dentist. That has not changed at all.
That might be illegal.
And then two grants of school choice resources, they've deployed over 1,500 Chromebooks. In nursing, the Shine Initiative, grant award over three years for mental health and wellness, and I hope you can see here that these things are kind of all tied together, and they're also tied to those six objectives. And then the screening, Brief Intervention Grant for Substance Abuse in Education. So, now, where the, this first slide is the recommended, they're either required or recommended investments. So, the first one is the increases for the new labor contract. So, this year, the coming year, the negotiated increases that we have worked on are adding almost $1.4 million to next year's budget. So, when you see it in little pieces of seven negotiations, it's in pieces, but when you bring it all together, this is, you know, basically what we've committed to in terms of compensation for our staff. Then transportation contract increase of one bus, then at Memorial, because of the increase of enrollment that we've had at Memorial, we need to add another enrichment teacher. So, we're adding an FTE at Memorial, and that will be worked out at the school level of how that FTE will, we've already looked at all the class sizes and the enrollment of all of our schools, and adjusted all of that, and the determination was that because of the increase, the classrooms that we added, and remember, we added classrooms last year, were sufficient to manage and increase this coming year, but they would need an additional enrichment teacher. At Long Joe, giving the enrollment that's, we're going to be adding two more classrooms there, and that's a reflection of this increased enrollment that we've had, and also of a bubble that is moving through the schools and moving into the upper grades. And there have been similar reductions if there, if we've looked at class sizes and saw that a bubble went up. School building maintenance, that's an additional, just so I'm using the right, 11,000, right?
Correct.
11,000, okay. 11,000 for facilities needs, for the nurse director, those pieces, when we implemented nurse director, those were done with grants, and then the grants diminish over time, and now that full salary is, this is the remainder of the salary, and it's being absorbed in the regular budget. Then, as we looked at the, the high school extracurricular account was being underfunded by about $60,000. The reality of what was playing out in terms of stipends for sports and for other activities was greater than what was in that line item. So, one of the things that we've been doing every year is trueing up any of those places where they're either higher or lower. In some cases, the amount that was budgeted in a line item was more than what was used traditionally over some years. So, then at that point, you'd lower that one, but in some cases, it was where it was not, there was not sufficient amount in that line item. So, at the high school, we're adding 60,000, and those are all for extracurricular activities, stipends and other kinds of costs, graduation, all those things. There's a major account at the high school that covers all of that.
So, that's, that's separate than the athletic?
Just to be clear, that's all stipends, Andre.
So, it's, so it's all stipends, so athletics and everything is in there?
No.
No, coaching is separate from budget.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, okay.
So, it's separate, so that raised budget is the athletic budget, so these are, you know, National Honor Society, you know.
Class advisors.
Class advisors, all of those kinds of things. And then just strictly contractual services and sped, we're adding another 30,000, and then in sped tuitions, another 300,000. As shocking as that number is, that's, that's not an unusual number to see across the state, because these numbers are generated by need and not by anything else. So, it's based, so one year it can go up, one year it can go down, and as we're looking at the projection of where our costs will be for sped tuitions, that line item needs an additional 300,000. The next one is two ELL teachers, and Bonnie, who is our ELL director, has spoken about a CPR report where they come in and look at your ELL program, and a strong recommendation for a couple of years has been, we needed another ELL teacher at McKay and at the high school in order to meet the requirements that are set out in the, in that CPR, that review. This year, we've made other accommodations, and this year, we really needed to bite the bullet and provide the staffing. So, these are two ELL teachers, one at McKay and one at the high school. And then the 128,000 is adding an increase to our substitute account, and that is an account that at the end of the year has been short regularly. And those of you who've watched budgets go by long enough know that that's a very difficult account to manage. It covers anything from, you know, maternity leaves to long-term illnesses to whatever, so it has a lot of play in it from one year to the next. So, all of these amounts are what we have determined are needed to move forward next year, you know, keeping the district whole in all of the work that we're doing. And as you could imagine, that amount was so large, and you saw that, you know, the additional increase is, is under $2 million, so how do you balance the budget? So, here is where we're looking for planned savings. We had a longevity account, which is a personnel account that allowed us to, you know, again, this is a moving target every year, our assumption is, is that given our history, the history of looking at longevity, we're able to reduce that account by $97,000. There's a legal account that carries money in it to cover all of our legal issues, and any items that fall under that category, we're looking, again, these are looking at three- and four-year trends of each of these accounts. We believe that we can responsibly reduce that account by $50,000. Then, again, these will, the two next ones will all be based on need and all be based on numbers. So, whether they're special education teachers, or whether they're paras in the classroom, and these are general ed paras, they will be based on looking at the numbers in every school, looking at IEPs, looking at needs, and the reductions are made based on that. So, as you can see, there are no specifics in terms of it's this school, or it's that school, or it's this para, or that para, because we're constantly looking at these numbers. We just looked at enrollment today. So, we're constantly looking at our enrollment, not only the general ed enrollment, but what is our special education enrollment, what is our ELL enrollment?
So, that's, that seems like a lot of people. Is that, I mean, I guess I'm just kind of curious about that, so is there that room? I mean, I know you're looking at enrollment, but the enrollment suggests that, because what you're saying there is that you can.
It's enrollment and need, it's not just a money, it's not just a numbers issue, it's also a need issue. You're looking at the numbers at a particular grade level, you're looking at the numbers of special education students in a particular classroom or grade level, and Rowan has met with all of the principals, Rowan and Alicia have, has now met with all of the principals, and this is all based on the examination of the classrooms, class sizes, and the student body that is in the school or moving up into either middle school or the next grade level. So, these are based on numbers now that we have.
Are we still getting, though, the amount of kids coming into the district like we did this year, where there's, there are so many special education students that are?
They could, but they could be coming in with different needs, they could be spread in a different school, so they come in as a person to the district, but where, which grade level they're in and which school they go to will then depend on, well, is that school have extra resources and doesn't need anybody, or less resources? So, believe me, this, these are numbers that we scrutinize, and this has all of a legal component to it anyway. So, this is not just, you know, what we think or what we would like to happen, we still have to work with whatever the mandates are legally on a particular special education component. Then Bob has been working with our bus company, and we're feeling very confident that we're going to be able to reduce our busing by one bus. And the number's not here, it used to be in there.
Because the net number is shown on the.
Oh, because it's in the other one, so when I did, right, okay, again, Finance Director, so he already took care of that in the other, in the previous slide.
Double count it.
And then, then, so here's one where McKay will need one less seventh-grade teacher. So, I told you that when we're looking at this, we're not just looking at where the bubbles are, we're to increase, it's like what's decreasing. So, you, you might. So you've, you might have four sections moving into a grade level that had five sections and you're looking at that number and going, oh, those four will move up into five, we could reduce those five sections now to four. So that's what's happening at Rheingold for one of the grade levels, is that we're able to reduce that by one. And the same thing at McKay. At one time, we were thinking that the cohorts would probably go to around 98 at McKay. They're really trending more towards 78 or 75. So what we're seeing is, is that moves its way through, we're looking and saying, oh, we could remove a teacher. Now, all these things have been discussed in individual meetings. We've gone, we had them come to us, we had the principals come to cabinet, and we went through every school like this with this. So the savings there is $487,000. I'm going to let you walk through this slide because you do a better job of it than I do, so.
Thanks. So really, this slide is a recap of what's already been presented. But first of all, we started with this year's budget or direct spend of $51,400,000. Then we looked at all the increases of just under 2.5 million. Then we subtracted out the 487,000 of decreases that the superintendent just mentioned. One of the things that we noticed when we started getting into more details is that we have what's called a salary differential. And over the last year, there was about a half million dollar savings. When we prepare our budget, we based on, based the budget and the salaries on who's here when we're preparing the budget. Between May and September, and by the time the school year got into swing, there was probably about 75 teachers that turned over one way or the other. So when you save all those, you know, between high step, low steps retiring, you know, and sometimes the positions just not being filled with a teacher and sometimes just having a substitute in there, it all adds up pretty quickly over time. So that's about a half million dollars. So then we come to the net request, taking into consideration that half million dollar salary differential savings of about $52,912,000. And with a budget of $52,300,000, there's about a $600,000 difference, $612,000. So what we typically do are, what we have done and which we think we'll be able to do again for next year is carry funds over from Circuit Breaker, which are transferable from year to year, otherwise all city spending has to be spent in the year that it's incurred. So we're going to transfer $612,000 to next year and that'll bring us to that 52,300.
And the Circuit Breaker money is money that you get from the state for additional costs, special education costs that are above and beyond a certain amount. So this slide is very compact, but the good news with this slide is, is that, you know, if everything stays the same, we're not cutting programs, we're not eliminating things. I think we've negotiated fear contracts with all of our staff and we're able, and we're basically moving forward into the coming year without a deficit, with a balanced budget. The, the presentation seems to take a long time, but the time that goes into preparing this is hours and days, you know, really looking at all of the data, looking at all of the areas of the district. And then sometimes you have areas that are not things that have happened in the past. That turnover of that amount of teachers is huge.
Does that concern you? I mean, is that?
Well, there, there's no one reason for any of those things. So the short answer is no, it doesn't. Because I know all of the stories and all of the conditions in all of those and really none of them are alarming. They're just the natural course of things. But then we've had years where there's almost nothing there for that. And there have been positions that have gone unfilled, you know, for whatever reason, you know, we've been able to say, you know what, we're not going to fill this. We have the science position.
Right.
You know.
Today.
It's been filled today.
Today.
But Mike Kosky left.
In October.
In October. So part of that SALDIF is, that's just one example of, you know, it might be $10,000 or $20,000, but add those up over time and you come up, you can come up in a particular year with a very large SALDIF. So I'm really pleased to be where we are. A big contributor to this is the increased enrollment. And then another contributor to this is just really, I think we're very budget conscious. I think we work very hard to, you know, keep a realistic budget, approach to budget, and yet make, keep all of our decisions based on those six objectives. You know, what are they and, you know, how are they contributing to our success? So we're not looking at, you know, we're, we're still providing a comprehensive public education, you know, at all levels.
I'd like to congratulate you and the staff for putting together this excellent budget. We're not cutting programs, we're not cutting staff. Teachers in Pittsburgh are providing excellent opportunities for our students and we're on solid ground. And when I read some of our neighboring communities, on Oakmont, they're, they're talking about cutting 29 staff and eliminating all extracurricula. We've got a good program here and things are going well. And we're going to have a foundation, meet foundation budget. Mayor Dean O'Tally.
He's committed to that.
Dedicated to education.
So full net school spending?
Yes.
Yeah, net school spending.
Yes, and we, we talk with the city all the time and, you know, there, there'll be a number that will come in and it'll go, whoa, it's moved us below net school spending. Then the next day, there's another number that comes in on some other component and upward above net school spending. So that's, you know, but there's really a commitment, you know, to be at least at net school spending. The mayor said that when, you know, he ran for office and when he took office. So none of the, now, the, the, the one component of this that's not baked into this cake is the kindergarten. So as you know, we receive $180,000 that helps provide full day kindergarten. So that chew has not dropped yet, which is why when you get emails from me saying, please call your representative, please advocate, you know, that kindergarten money is one component of it. So this is where, you know, our voice needs to be heard. We need that $180,000 and we need it the way we've had it and not with any rules or regulations being changed. Should that not come through, then I'm going to have to revisit this budget and I will have to find $180,000 somewhere else. But that's really the only piece that's hanging out there that's a substantial sum of money. Now, we're still, we'll still be talking about, we've got new curriculum, textbooks, technology, but we use school choice, we use school choice money for that. So you'll still be seeing those components, so just because you don't see it here doesn't mean that it's not a priority and it's not going to happen. It's just not in the regular city budget. This is just city budget.
I guess just our, our past practice the last couple of years has been to present the school choice budget in June, which I think we'd probably like to still keep on that schedule even though we're going to be presenting the city budget on May 31. We have a little bit more flexibility on the school choice in terms of timing.
And thank you.
And that's something that is our, the school committee's autonomy specifically.
Thank you for reminding me. So as you saw, we are early on, the, the budget process for the city is early. So we will be contacting you to schedule a second school committee meeting specifically to be the second hearing of the school committee budget. But hopefully, there will be very little shift or change from what you just saw tonight. But that, and that, and so that night, it'll just be the budget. That's all we'll do to get together so that we have, you've had a second hearing, there's been a second public hearing, and then you can vote the budget to then move it on to the city. Any questions?
Can, can you just, the, the Circuit Breaker transfer, can you just explain where that money comes from?
Yeah, that's basically every year when, if we have unspent funds, we transfer them to Circuit Breaker because Circuit Breaker allows them to carry them over to the next year.
Okay.
So again, with this year's kind of our salary diff for this year, that's basically rolling over.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
And can I just, just add one thing too, because Mr. Stevens has been involved. We are still exploring the solar front. We may be putting panels on roofs here at Memorial and at Rheingold with the new solar bill that's been passed recently. The developers going to be getting back to us sometime next week in terms of what the final economics are, but they're looking to get those installations on our roofs this summer, which if that happens, we'd be able to achieve some additional savings.
Additional savings.
But we don't, I don't know what those savings are and they're not baked into this presentation at all.
Okay. So next are donations. There's a McKinney Vento donation for $550. There is a donation to McKay Arts Academy for $300, 31 books for classroom library. There's a donation for Nurse and Health Services of 420, yes, $25 for donated T-shirts for students participating in the Phillips Speech Language Therapy Initiative. There's a donation to athletics of approximately, two donations of $50 each for a total of $100 for automatic blood pressure monitors.
Thank you, Sally.
Thank you, Sally.
And then there's a donation, St. Germain.
Soccer field net.
Right, for a soccer field net as part of an Eagle Scout surface project from Connor, St. Germain. And that's for a value of $500. And then here's that wonderful little thing that started years ago, and that is the curriculum, E L L curriculum project that was presented here, and we get royalty checks. They're not gigantic, but it's $506.22, so every little bit helps.
I get royalty checks? That's very respectable.
Do we have a running total of that something?
Yeah, yeah, we have a total.
We can get that.
It's just interesting to see how much that little project is.
I'm seeing the school choice funds, but I'm not seeing the paperwork that's been written here.
This was, I don't know if it was included in this package, one is, one of the requests is for the Boys and Girls State of two boys.
Oh, yes, it's on here.
That was on the last agenda.
But it's on here.
It's on, it's 15-689.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, it's to support students, $1,200 to support two boys and two girls to go to Boys State. And then there are three policy.
Superintendent's recommendation to accept the donation, $550. Can we just do, can we do 683, 684?
All the donations.
Through all the donations through.
87?
689.
89.
Together?
Yeah, I second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion 15-690.
We have, and now we can do the motion to accept, accept them all.
To do the. Oh, that's right, sorry. And now, are you making that motion?
I'm going to make the motion that we're going to accept all of our donations.
I'll second it.
I thought we did that.
No, we, we voted on whether we would combine them.
We voted to combine them. Wasn't that your, wasn't that, wasn't that your motion, wanting to combine them?
That was the intent.
Sorry.
This is the last piece of it, so Jean did the second, so now it's all in favor.
All in favor?
We're all in favor.
Aye. Okay. Now we'll take, do I have a motion through, for, we'll entertain 15-690?
691.
696, could I have a motion to combine 690 through?
Through 692 because they're approvals.
Right.
Sure. Motion to bundle those as one item to be approved or not?
Second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Another motion to, could I have a motion to?
All right, sure. A motion to approve the aforementioned policies which have been before you as second readings.
That would be 15-690 through 6.
Wait, so it was the first readings for the first two and second reading.
Sorry, you're absolutely correct, yes.
So we're, we're voting to, we're voting to approve 15-690 through 692. I mean, that would be the motion.
Yes, for them to move.
Is that your motion?
Yeah, my motion, all right, I will amend my motion so that we will be, that, that will, we will be voting to approve the passage of these policies to their next stage.
Yeah, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, 15-693, I believe we could take 15-693 and 15-694 together. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion, we take them together.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I have a motion to approve those.
Yes, motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. 15-695, a motion to approve the superintendent.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
96?
15-696.
Motion to pay the bills.
Okay, all, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so.
Okay, the last one.
And the last one, 15-697, there's a recommendation to approve the memorandum of agreement between the clerical association and the school committee.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Thank you.